With Co Brown's special ed in the past, it's a very major actor this year and we have because they have other experiences at Co Brown with different people in charge. The experience this year is completely different. So I do not think you can go on past information or past people's experiences with that. And like I said, they have available or any services that needs to be available that I've discovered so far who needs to bring that. But that in mind, I would also like to say that special ed placements are individual to the child, no matter who the child is or what they need. And I'd like the board to remember that there are a lot of laws in place that surround that so that you understand that every placement for a special ed child should be an individual decision. So I'm hoping when you guys look at a high school choice for, you know, the whole population, that it's more global. Probably you should pick and choose what kids might need because if it's a special ed need, that need will be met no matter where the child lives, where his step belongs. And I'm sure that a lot of schools have some great services and benefits out there and every school has something unique. So what you might get at one school, you might not get in another, but that's why I am confused to meet top place in particular. So those are just things I would like to share. So good luck in your decision making. I know it's a good project you guys have. Thank you.
Greg Whitmore, North Road. I'm this here to relentlessly remind everybody that the town did vote last year, or this year, sorry, to let's have more than one school, right? We did not want the 20-year Concord contract. And then on the other vote, we had that the town wanted us to look into at least two schools. Because at the end of the day, it's what it comes down to, I mean, whatever is best for the kids. And we currently have top-off agreements knocking on the door, becoming 100% legal uncontested in the state. So that gives us another way to allow this to happen.
Susan Franklin, South Road. I am here tonight to discuss serious concerns of the administration in Deerfield community school. On May 25th, 2018, the school board announced the hiring of Kristen Whitney and Lisa McConnell. Since that time, there has been an astounding turnover in teachers and parent educators at Deerfield. This is happening in a district where teachers used to stay their entire careers. If you lived in town long enough, oftentimes more than one generation would have the same teachers. Deerfield was an enjoyable place to work and raise children.
So I'm so sorry. The proper pathway in order to have complaints against individual people is to contact Patty. We unfortunately can't allow either positive or negative individual complaints against administration or teachers or students.
So if I were to contact the school board or the SAU and nothing happened, what is my, what is my caveat?
I, you can contact me.
Okay, so I just did that in the past and I didn't get very far.
Not with what we're discussing right now.
Because I want to deal with this before school starts because I'm concerned there might be an object.
I'm sorry. Any other public comments? We will move on to agenda review. We are going to have an addition to the agenda. Chris is here, so we are going to do the facility update as item A. And then we're moving the rest of them down one letter. Does anyone else have anything to add to the agenda? So we will start with the facility update.
So roof, roof is going along well, depending on the rain. Rain slows everything down when you're tearing off a rubber roof. But they're progressing day by day, probably twenty three sections. So we're getting there, we're getting there. Large pitch group, it's going to be complete. They remove a lot of the asphalt shingles. Those pitch groups, waiting for that last main pitch group once after all the kids are coming out. So we're moving along, we're moving on to that. We want to start it today. We've done quite a lot in the past days, so that's moving. ETA on that. By any unforeseen circumstances, mid-October. Fire line is roughly 75% complete. Should be wrapping up in the next two weeks and then we're going to the testament papers. Everything has to be done. I gave until the 20th, which is two days. Teachers come back with the 27th or 28th, and the students on the 29th. So that's, they're moving very well on that. And the contractor for the safety film had an opening. So the entire first floor, the little rectangular windows in all the classrooms in the months are going to be complete. That's a need thirty days for material to cure and then you're probably caught.
You have Phil Summer. Does anyone have any questions for Chris?
Listen, I plan to walk apart tomorrow night, so I'm happy to see stuff started there. Looks like there's a couple of objectives still to be done out there.
Yep. They already got the equipment on site that just goes down to the grade. So they'll go six inches below grade, come back in with their fill, find the course of two weeks and then one week. Find the question.
And you said that you expect that to finish up in the problem, right?
Hundred percent, very well. Again, we're also including, it'll be installing concrete under that, that wonderful area that you're leaving for the future.
Awesome. I'm happy to see so much for being there, thank you.
I have one other question.
Please.
With all the additional rain that last couple of weeks, any, seeing what the roof would be able to, uh, sustain dry?
Nothing, other than the joints that they need to overlap. We've had some water sheepage. We've had other water because now that the ballast is gone, it didn't, they kind of held off the water in certain areas. So we've got new things popping up on a weekly basis. But the contractor is very quick to get them sealed up, temporarily attached on it, just to keep us dry.
Hopefully we just got some side numbers up here.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Awesome. Anything else? Great, thank you for saying you're pretty sweet.
I want to work on it so much for the rest.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll welcome up Ms. Bigford and Ms. McConnell to do the special ed presentation. I don't know what format you guys need, but if you have to move or?
Yeah, I mean, I can see here you want to sit on the chair.
Do you want to come this way so that you can talk in that way maybe?
All right.
Can't point out here.
Yes, yes. I do, thank you.
So thank you guys so much for coming. We asked you to come because speaking for myself, I don't have a very good background about special education costs and the needs of our students. So thank you guys so much. I will let you introduce yourselves if you'd like, and then maybe just go from there.
Great, so I'm Lisa McConnell, I'm a special education coordinator for this district. And I'm happy to share what I know or my best attempt at what I know as far as special education thinking ahead to.
Can you guys, you're doing a search and the ACI, I'm really good.
I love my teacher ones.
I'm Jess Bigford. I'm the, I was previously a director of student services last year and I'm the current assistant superintendent for the SAU. And I will, hopefully, there are some pieces in here that are undetermined costs as of right now because there are speculations of what could be. So I'll help fill in of what our experience is in with other schools and how much those costs are and how much potentially it could be for some of the cost-related special ed.
So I guess before I begin, I just want to thank some of the staff that helped me put this together. So I was really fortunate when I reached out to the personnel at Co Brown and at Concord. I was, you know, supported in all of my questions and provided with the information that I needed. I particularly want to thank Erin Lasky at Co Brown and Erica Boizzi, who's the special ed coordinator at Co Brown. And then on the Concord side, Michelle Speckman and John Sealy, who kind of helped me put some of this information the board tonight, so.
And thank you so much. I know this is a lot of work to do in the middle of summer.
No, no, it's fine. And it's really helpful for me too, to learn more. I'm always interested in special education and how it's done in different places. So it's helpful for me to look at other schools. Obviously, most of my experience has been with Concord and I'm fortunate that one of my favorite things of my job is every year I get to go with our eighth grade students for their transition meetings to Concord and so I come back feeling really positive about our students being ready for their high school experience. So that's been my primary role is in relationship to students' experiences at Concord. So it was good for me to learn a little bit more about other options. So I'm happy to share what I can tonight with you. And I'm sure we'll raise more questions, which I'm keeping a running list. And as I said, people have been helpful, so I'm happy to go back and see more clarity if I need to. So generally speaking, I guess, I don't know how you want me to go about this, but first of all, I will say the packet that I put together for the board does, I just want to use the caveat that some of the numbers that are presented are based on 22, 23. That was the best, most available information. Some are projections from budgets for 23, 24. I tried to indicate that on the handout so that you can see there may be some minor differences. These are sort of best guesses, these are not exact numbers. It's sort of approximations and averages that I was able to pull together. It's a little bit like preparing apples and oranges, so you know, that was tricky too. Some schools have programs that are built, or some service providers build in a half hour, some do hours. So just trying to get it in a format that hopefully was able to do sort of a side-by-side comparison. But to Jess's point, that there are a lot of things that are still unknown to us and variables that we'll have to kind of deal with as we work through this process together. So I guess just some general premises that I could share is that both schools have a regular education tuition rate. So that is set. At Concord High School, that has historically been negotiated with the board and contract, right? So at Co Brown, that is a set rate, a tuition rate set by their board of trustees. So that is something just, that is sort of set and that's sort of the starting point, the regular education tuition. And then of course, each school has additional costs that are associated with those students that require special education. So for the Concord High School tuition rate, that's one of those unknowns, right? Now we know it through next year because we are still under our current contract with Concord. However, should we enter renegotiations with Concord, that set tuition rate thing change? And we know that, that's been part of our conversations all along. In addition to the regular education tuition rate at Concord High School, there is a capital fee that is charged to all students, which I think most people are familiar with. And then at Concord High School, each special education service is billed separately by school to our district. So we get an itemized invoice of each service based upon the needs of each individual student. So that is still mediated out to us in invoices. At Co Brown, they have their regular education tuition that's set by their board of trustees. And they have two rates. They have their regular education tuition rate and then a flat rate that is at a higher cost for students who receive special education support services. And that is more of a flat rate that covers some of the services provided to special education students. At Co Brown, they do not provide through their personnel related services. Related services are things like speech and language, observation of therapy, sometimes counseling, other things that might be outside of the academic domain. Co Brown does not necessarily have their own personnel that provide those. The relationship that they have established with their sending districts is that those services arranged contracted providers by the sending district. So that's a little bit different. And just, you know, an understanding that all special education expenses, regardless of where the student attends high school, are based upon their individual needs and what is determined by the IEP team. And those IEP teams do include representation, what we call an LEA, someone from the Deerfield district who is there to represent the district's best interests, both respectfully but on behalf of a student's needs as well. So it's not as though any of these schools can sort of go rogue and just create IEPs where lots of other things and there is someone there representing the district and the student's best interest in terms of their service needs. Please interrupt me too if you have questions on this one. So I guess what I was looking to compare, just some fundamental differences that I would point out. And differences doesn't mean pro or cons, just observational differences. So Concord High School does have on staff its own related service providers for things like speech and language. They hire their own speech and linguists. Co Brown, as I mentioned earlier, provides those services through independently negotiating contracts with outside agencies. There are a variety of agencies that provide those services. And so it would be something that this district would be responsible for arranging. Concord High School bills separately for each special education service based upon the program rate and the number of service units that the student receives. So for example, if a student is in a particular program, they figure out the entire cost of running that program. And if there's ten kids in that program, they divide it up. They get program cost, one of our students is in there, we get charged for our student's portion of the expense of that program. Question?
Can you just bring up what reference person for the class?
Yes. So you're looking at the Concord numbers?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Unless you're going to get there after.
No, that's okay. And I don't know how long I've been allowed to talk, so I'm a talker, so just cut me off. So students' IEP determines how many service units they may need. So if a student, for example, needs a reading support class two times a week, they would take that amount of service and they would figure out how much that would be and then would bill us accordingly. So there are, yeah, it's based on the service.
And I'll just add onto that. So most of the students that fall back for special education over at Concord receive a support class. So if they need individualized instruction for reading or for math, they are assigned a class to go get that and that's what that cost is.
So is that per student?
That's a per student, per, yes, per class. So if you have a student who's taking two student support classes, you would get twice that amount billed.
Okay, so that solves, so.
Right, they have math support and reading, yeah.
Right, exactly. And then the life skills program underneath that is an additional cost for if they need a specialized program such as their life skills program, which is a more intensive needs program for these more significant disabilities. That, that is the cost for that program. Per student, yeah.
Per student on top of the regular.
Right. And on top of, and are, is it feasible that a student gets life, is in the life skills program and also gets other related services?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. And those would all be billed.
But not necessarily the academic support classes. Because the academic support classes are part of the life skills program.
But they may get each or a team, or have a parent educator.
Did you, did you notice like life skills program was brought out or there are other, I think, what is the second category?
They have a behavioral support program, um, advanced. So there's an access and a speaking to Concord. They have program approval through the Department of Education to offer specific programming for students that might require formal life skills support program, an access program. They also have DLE approval for the voluntary advanced program and that's for students who struggle more with emotional behavioral concerns. And so Co Brown does not have any DLE approvals for any specialized type of programming beyond the typical.
I think the scenario model. Concord mentioned something about kids who are in the hospital, right in the hospital. Is that, that's something that's even in addition to that? So like a work, a work study.
Like a work study and a transition program, anything like that.
And Co Brown, do they have anything like that?
Not to my knowledge.
For the advanced program, is that covered under special ed? Like do we, are we obligated to pay for that? How does that sort of work?
It would. It would be very similar to what you see there for the access program in the life skills program.
If a student needed one of those kinds of supports or classes and did attend a different high school, we would be obligated to provide that. It just might be very different than a school that's already got it established. So we would still be, if a student was going to Co Brown, for example, and they needed a life skills type program, we would either have to develop a program over there to run or we would have to tuition that student somewhere else that had a program that has. And trans, yes, yeah, there's additional costs involved. We'll get to transportation with others.
Yeah, and so transportation being one. Other things, I guess, transportation is sort of one of the issues right now. Most people know that Deerfield currently provides two buses to our students who attend Concord High. Majority of our students are being able to access that transportation. We have approved students who do require specialized transportation. Upset with contract for a small bus that does transport some of our students to Concord High. But we currently obviously don't have any transportation arranged for students who may attend a different school. I'm not saying that that wouldn't be something that we would discuss in the future. It's just obviously part of the conversation as we look at what we need to figure out as we look at potential school choice.
Right, it's a very dumb question.
Yeah, it's a dumb question.
So if a student chooses to unenroll and go to a private school, let's say, and they have special, special education needs, does the district still have to pay for that transportation?
If it's parental choice, we are not obligated to provide any service support.
Got it.
Okay, if it was an IEP team decision that was agreed upon, then yes, we'd be obligated to provide those things.
Got it.
And just to kind of go on with the transportation piece a little bit, you know, we've got some information here to look at and I just want to throw some caution out there and just a realistic picture of transportation costs. Transportation is probably one of our biggest costs associated with special education right now. Over the last half a decade, the cost of transportation for special education has skyrocketed. Our transportation costs for one student to get specialized transportation are usually in the area of around eighty thousand per student to get specialized transportation. It does decrease when you have ride shares, but it's not split apart. So just because we have a bus or a van that might accommodate five students doesn't mean they take that eighty thousand dollars and divide it by five. That's not how it works. Transportation companies set a rate for what it would be for shared rides and it's not divided. If that makes sense.
You're not paying for the bus.
Correct, you're not paying for the bus and the driver, you're paying for the service. And so there are set rates for what shared transportation would be, individual transportation would be. And then if a student needed like eight on the bus to ride with them for safety or medical reasons. So something to caution is that if you split and you have a variety of students going to different high schools or even just two high schools, you increase your costs inadvertently because you don't just have one bus taking all kids in the same location. You're now talking smaller transportation. And who are obligated to pay for that transportation, you can't opt out. Because if they have an IEP, you are mandated by federal law to provide transportation to that child on the day that they receive special.
And could a parent opt out of that, like would they drive themselves?
They could, yep.
But you can't count them.
You can't count on it and you can't ask them to do that. Yeah, so I think transportation is one thing that obviously really needs to be thought through. And, you know, this board has discussed obviously the challenge that we have to find drivers and securing transportation. So that's been a challenge for us at the special ed level as well. Specialized transportation even is calling around to involve several vendors to try and secure someone that can take on that route and add it to, we were existing with it, you know. So it, it is challenging for drivers and companies out there. But the other thing is they know that and they know that we have to provide it. So then that does sometimes drive up the, drive up the rates, if I'm being very honest. So the unknown variables kind of moving forward in terms of expense are obviously the tuition rate for Concord High School beyond next year. That has to be negotiated. Transportation rates and availability. If we're looking at utilizing Co Brown as one of the options, the other kind of unknown variable is the, the rates related to those related services like speech and language. And whether or not you can find the available providers to provide those contracted services. I can just escape from an experience where I needed to provide a contract with speech and language pathologist for a student and needed to call five or six agencies, you know. And it's hard if it's one or two students and it's out in the middle of Deerfield and, you know, they can't really tie that easily into their itinerary people. They move around to multiple schools. So scheduling that could be challenging and fitting in of certain different finding available personnel to deliver that. Parent educator situation, just to kind of speak to that a little bit. At both schools, it is the responsibility of the high school to hire their own personnel. We don't want to get into a situation where we're hiring parent educators under our collective bargaining agreement to work somewhere else. So they do the hiring, they set those rates and then invoice the district for those charges. So the only difference is that Concord High does have, their educators are unionized, so they sort of have a set step scale, which you're familiar with probably with bookkeeping contracts, a teacher contract or a parent educator contract. So those set rates are kind of established through the negotiated contract. Co Brown negotiates individually with each provider. So that's a bit of an unknown for us. I guess the other thing to think about is if we are in a situation where we're sending fewer students to Concord High School, the potential exists that the cost for students or specialists to do services would increase. Because as I mentioned earlier, they take the cost of the full program divided by the number of students in the program and then bill you for that portion of the cost. So if there were fewer students in the program, they still need that same teacher and they still need that same support person. They still, so the cost of the program doesn't change, but if there are fewer students potentially that are enrolled in that program, that would drive up the cost for each individual student. Is that clear? And then of course, the other unknown variable is just sort of what our student enrollments and the needs of each of those students could look like and how they could do that in multiple settings. If Co Brown or Concord or other schools have that.
I just want to add one thing as well. You know, just kind of general, I guess, statement, but like really word of caution is that as you guys are planning and thinking about what schools are going to be options and choices for kids, we really want to make sure that we don't create a situation of discrimination and segregation. Do not want all of our kids with identified disabilities attending one school. That would really create some significant legal issues for us and would not be fair to those students. Uh, so we really want to make sure that whenever you guys decide, that you keep that in mind, that we don't have all of our students, especially attending Concord or all of them attending Co Brown, but then the, you know, the rest of the population has a choice of a variety of options. So really just be cautious of that while you guys are planning and deliberating what options are open.
I have, I have two. One's a comment, I'm not sure. We were told at Co Brown that if, um, a student has an IP, there's that additional charge. But they also said if they have, if they require individual para educators, it's even more.
Correct.
Around that, so, yeah, so I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, the fun rate for special education, that they have that seven thousand dollars or so, is really just for case management.
Right.
Uh, it doesn't include any related services such as speech, OT, para educator, um, any kind of really individualized instruction that may happen. Uh, that would have to, those would all be additional charges.
Okay, and the seven thousand is for a student who has one service.
Just an IP.
Or.
Just an IP automatically, yeah.
Automatically, yeah. Correct. So that would be covered by that seven thousand dollars. So my understanding from speaking with Cara Co was that that is included in that special ed tuition rate that they quoted, um, that that would cover the academic services. It's only the related services that would be billed, um, through the individual contract. So I think if.
More intensive.
Yes, those services. So to your point, if a student needed a reading support class at Co Brown, I'm, I'm fairly certain it is included in that additional tuition rate that may be sourced.
But it wouldn't include a student who needs like all day individualized support. So wouldn't be like a life skills type program for a student, that would just be kind of your generic, um, IEP support with reading and math to their reading system.
Yeah, and if you are able to look at both courses of study, I mean, you'll see in both the course of study for Co Brown and the course of study for Concord High, they list the courses that are available to students who may need a more supporting class than a traditional, say, English nine. They might need something, um, a little different, and so those courses are available at both high schools.
And the other question I have for you is on the, um, sample of contracted related services you have under the capital P's documentation. Does that mean that they'll do like, say, speech and language individual, but then for them to write up the report more than?
Correct, yeah, so that is one of the unknown, um, sort of variables to related services. So if you're a fan of related services through, um, Concord High School, for example, and the student has thirty minutes of speech, we're billed for thirty minutes of speech. If a student is receiving the contracted services through Boothby or Capital P, or some of the other agencies that we work with, they do charge both for the direct therapy time, but also, um, other services related to the support of that student. So it could be, um, I need to write an IP progress note, and that took me thirty minutes. So every time they are doing a professional task related to that student, we are billed some, some agencies bill on fifteen minute A for minutes, some half hour, um, it depends on the contract. Um, but that can add up actually rather quickly, so even a, um, and they wouldn't build less than fifteen minutes, right? So, um, for example, like if, yeah. If the hourly, yeah, if the hourly rate is ninety six dollars for every fifteen minutes that they spend working with that student outside of that therapy session, it's twenty four dollars. So, you know, they need to email the parent, twenty four dollars. They need to go check in with the classroom teacher and see how things are going with the new blah blah blah, twenty four dollars or more. So that's, that's one of the things that can, um, add up completely. Some of the contracts include transportation to the site, so they're coming from, you know, one school to another. Uh, they might, each, each agency has different contracts.
Yeah.
When we look at our, like, student service services.
Can you just talk a little louder?
Yeah, so our student service services, we're looking at, what's the, say, if you're receiving just identified assistance versus, say, additional services?
In terms of related services?
Yes.
Um.
During our, aren't.
I.
All of your questions.
And now I would say.
Good question.
Yeah, I would say, in, or, in looking at the current Concord High School, um, I would say related services are provided to at least a third, perhaps a third to a half. Um, of one type or another, could be counseling, could be speech, and could be, um, it, it could be a consultation that's considered a service, um, that might only be fifteen minutes a month, but it is a critical of a major service. So it varies a lot. That's the hard part. That's the hard handling, prediction part. And student services change, right? IEPs are reviewed annually. So what we think might be in place for their ninth grade year, we can't automatically plan for or budget for their sophomore year because it's the obligation of the IEP team to review that plan annually and make any necessary changes based on students' needs. So, you know, it may be a reduction in services, it may be an addition of services, it all depends on each individual's decision. Doesn't help much. Thank you.
Yeah, keep them coming.
So in that, we have multiple schools and we're sending students to. What we do is our.
That is.
Can you repeat that question? Cause I couldn't even.
I'm sorry.
You're not a quiet person.
Go on then. Um, in the event where we're sending students to multiple schools, what we do is our.
Oh, okay.
That could be, that's, that's one of those unknowns, right? We don't know what kind of time commitment that we create and scheduling conflicts. So it very well could be that you need a full-time LEA rep instead of a part-time. Uh, right now, you guys have a part-time LEA rep because everyone's consolidated into one spot, so it's easy to get to. There's no conflicts because their scheduling is all funneled through one person. But if you had three or four different schools, that may not be the case, and you may have to be looking at a full-time position or be able to make that schedule work and the travel between all those different schools.
So just to clarify, personally, as the LEA for Deerfield district, I do not attend every meeting at Concord High School. We have a representative, a part-time representative, front end director, who represents the best interest of the field at that given answer of that capacity. Um, and to Jeff's point, it's one thing to go to Concord and set aside a day to see if maybe it's, I need to, um, be sophisticated, but if there are multiple schools in town, it may require additional personnel. Or to divide the, or.
Or five.
Yeah.
And if we had, I just want to reiterate, I'm pretty sure you said this already, but say we had three or four schools, if there were specialized students going to any of those schools, we'd have to provide transportation.
That is correct.
On the daily services.
Yep. Okay, so like, say they only get services on Tuesdays, that's the only day you have any current transportation.
Co Brown has a protocol standard though, so.
What does that mean?
Yeah. Well, that's where it gets tricky, right? So nobody seems to function on, uh, you know, uh, Monday to Friday schedule anymore. Um, so for example, at, at Concord, they have their transportation on their time days. So like, one day you have three classes or four classes, the next day you have another three or four. So if your services are tied to the color of the day and not really into Monday, Wednesday, Friday, um, that makes it harder to predict when that transportation is needed or not. Um, yeah, so the, and.
But Co Brown, I think that.
But Co Brown is the waterfall, so they do A, B, C, D, and then the next ones. And then, correct, yeah, and it's just, yeah.
So when you have schedules like that, you end up typically having to provide transportation every single day because we can't contract to a transportation provider because they'll have, well, we need you Monday this week, Tuesday next week, Friday, Thursday, the following, we, we won't get.
Right, and because they all work, I mean, the contracted personnel, they tend to be Monday, Friday people, right?
Right, and you won't get this. Right.
So they do set their schedules Monday through Friday, so that makes it tricky as well, um, because, and they work in multiple schools. So that's really the only way they can do it, is to say, I'm coming every Tuesday. That might be that the student's getting OT every Tuesday, but it might be a different schedule.
Chances are, if a student is, does have an IP in a high school setting, they more than likely have services almost everything. They probably are in some kind of class or are receiving direct instruction from a special educator at least three days a week, if not five.
Do we know, like, currently at Concord, are our students receiving, are there days where people are not receiving any services? Or like, is it that most of, someone is getting a service every day, pretty much?
Someone would be getting. Someone, yeah.
Can you tell me, I see on the bottom, it says we can reimburse parents to transport their own children.
That is an option.
Can you tell me more about that?
So we have had situations where we have not been able to secure transportation through a contracted provider. And as I mentioned earlier, transportation is very, um, challenging right now. Um, and so we have made arrangements with parents to be that provider and we reimburse them for their mileage, um, and for their child's to. Only means we have to get that student there for their opportunity to services.
It's the IRS.
Are responsible.
Right.
So it's, um, point six five, five cents.
A mile.
And any tolls. But I don't think there's been, you know, either of those.
Not, not very, very, not very many parents, uh, take us up on that offer. It's hard to get parents to do that.
Right.
Uh, yeah. Um, just because sometimes they're insecure presentation, or they have a job where they need to be there at certain times, they're going to be at school. So it, it does become tricky sometimes. I mean, we tried to do it, because transportation is extremely expensive, where we're charged six hundred dollars a day for transporting a kid. Uh, so if we can get a parent to do that, that's ideal, but it's few of our, we, that parents are actually.
When they do it, they can do it on my own.
Right, yeah, right, you know, so it, um. It's an option.
Yep.
If it works.
And we do try to do as much as possible because it is a whole lot. A, instead of getting, and B, it's more financially sound than this. On the last page, we tried to do a side by side.
Side by each.
Side by each, yes. Well, the kids that are on the stairs, you need. And, uh, but, yes, and I want to make sure that we mention that transportation on the CHS side is in, because most of our kids take the bus. Um, we do have specialized transportation in Concord, but it's only for a small amount of students, it's not every student with an IP. You would have to have specialized transportation at Co Brown or another school. So that's, so the way that there was costs.
Must all of our kids.
Right, good point.
What you mean?
If, if it's all kids, it's all, like, all gen ed and kids who receive special education services, then that's fine, but making sure that there's no separation. Well, all of our kids who don't have IPs are going to appear.
Right.
But because it's easier for us, all our kids who have IP are going to stay in Concord, like, that's illegal, so. So we have to make sure that we don't do that. But if all of our kids went to, you know, PA, or all of our kids went to Co Brown, or all of our kids went somewhere else, that's fine, because everyone. You just don't want to separate and make it so that they're segregated and relative to discrimination.
And how long that transportation is continued, that Concord is really up to you guys as you work through this process, right? So we know that we have current students there, and we basically said to the families that, you know, we are providing transportation to Concord, and we have two buses that do that for us, but, you know, should that skin right approach model, that may impact what transportation looks like to Concord as well. So, um, it's just one variable to work through as you think about it holistically, not just sort of problematically, but how to get the kids once they get there. So focus just really on, um, cost, the best of our ability and where we are. Um, obviously, there are problematic differences too, but those are things, um, you know, we can discuss for a period of time. But, um, you know, obviously, if you talk a little bit as a board about some of the offerings that Concord has related to, um, and most of the wallets right there versus perhaps what Co Brown's able to offer in that area. So there are certainly other variables, um, but let's really focus on more the cost of, of special education, not necessarily problematic differences.
And this packet will leave with Co Brown. If you have interest in getting us from other schools, um, you can let us know. We can do some research and try to figure out how much programs and services cost from other schools as well.
I would take pepper up the academy, probably.
Okay.
Those will be easier to get.
Yeah. Should have some connections there.
Um, does anyone have a question?
For now.
There's a lot to digest in here, and again, please reach out.
I mean, I would love to talk more sometime about the problematic differences. Because some of the things that we've been hearing in our communications with Concord, since I've been here an awful lot, to try to get their students a lot ready to, to, to work. Not, not like just a value feed anymore, it's a more scary thing. Makes it a bit easier. And that's, and I, and I also, I guess I'm interested in their, um, their achievement, right? You know, how well are they achieving when they're doing, they're working with kids who have disabilities and that. How, what's their success, yeah?
Thank you.
There's nothing.
Yeah.
There's nothing, I don't really want to.
It's a lot of work, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, no, we still have something for growing, you know.
We're working around all these instructions. At least we worked really hard putting together this package of.
Wow, it would be quite a effort.
Yeah.
Thank you both so much.
It's just. If you have other questions that pop up, if you down that, if you, if you want to funnel those through Chris or Patty, and then, um, she can send those to me or Lisa, and we can get your questions and questions.
Yeah, I have a problem in asking.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was a good segue into our next topic, which is high school discussion. I will say that, um, we are still negotiating, and we have not made a firm decision as of yet as to what we'll be doing. I don't, I don't anticipate a vote, uh, because there's still some unknowns that we're getting information about. Um, I did want to sort of have a discussion about a few different topics that I've seen come up or people have emailed me about related to high school options. Um, again, probably are not making a decision, but just sort of for a board discussion. Um, understanding, of course, that we are still in negotiations, so we won't be able to have discussions about every specific issue. Um, but I wanted to just sort of, uh, throw out a few topics, see what, if people have comments, thoughts. Um, we, obviously, for the past twenty years, have had a school of record. Um, and I've had, people have come to this meeting, and it proposed that Co Brown is the school of record. Obviously, I had Comfort as the school of record. Um, wanted to see if people had thoughts or wanted to discuss that sort of, again, knowing that we are still in, in negotiations, but if there were thoughts that people have about that.
I have to say, I mean, this is certainly open for discussion, but I think some people, a lot of people have mentioned Co Brown as a school of record. I guess I have a little, I have concern with that, so we don't feel that they, I mean, they don't meet the needs of our kids naturally, you know, like. You know, like, yes, they have special education for all students, they can get services, they can get current services. But they don't have a lot of programs that Concord has as far as really helping those kids be successful in life. I think it's more just like an academic support. The other thing is the CRTC is amazing at Concord. I mean, it's just unbelievable what they do for those kids. Like, they do, they implement, say, programs, they're, they're doing something with the culinary, where they did a catering business there. And the guy who runs it was the chef at the White House for a while. And the fire program at Concord, Fire Academy, where they go there. And I just, I know Co Brown has vocational programs. I'm not saying they don't, but they don't have that two-year specific program that's really pushing the kids toward getting a, a job laid wrong. I just feel that that's really, really meeting the needs of the kids. And I'm not saying that Concord's the best choice necessarily for every kid, but I'm just thinking if we're looking at the overall population, I think Concord would be a better school if we had a school of record. But I think that's kind of my thoughts where I am right now. I'm not, it's not set in stone, but that's kind of where I am.
And I, just to kind of jump on that bandwagon with CRTC, I mean, one thing that I have been realizing lately in several different areas in my life, like, kids are, kids are graduating that program, but they don't want to go into the field that they're studying in CRTC. They can go into college, and they're already in. They have like a semester of credits already, going to college. And to me, I'm like, that's.
They have like a year, a year and a half of college credits. And a lot of them have jobs, like, they come out and, you know, they're on a multi-program, and they got jobs in the company. And what was, what was it they were telling me, there was all the teacher program? And, yeah. No, that wasn't what I was saying, but they have a teacher program too now, where they're, the kids do CRTC for teaching, and then they pay for them to go to college.
They, they become paras at school.
Oh, yeah, while they're going to school.
Right.
Aras while they're going to school. So they're trying to kind of like, kind of breed their own faculty in a way, so that they, that's just awesome. And, but I was thinking, there's nothing else you can do. Anyway, it, it's just, there's all these like stories. We, you get them going, and they start talking about it, there's just so many opportunities, so, so many opportunities. And I think Co Brown's a very good school, that it don't, has that kind of opportunity. So I feel like my job in the school board is to think about what's the best place, the best opportunity for our kids. And I feel like Concord has the best opportunities, but obviously, parents may want to choose to go to school. I get that. I'm not saying that that's not an option, but I do not feel comfortable making Co Brown a school of record.
The, the comments about CRTC are important. Sorry, the air conditioner is.
You want us to turn it on?
I don't think Co Brown is special for my own benefit. I don't think maybe the level of my portion of life is. If Concord had a seat at the end, if you had a school of record, I clearly didn't particularly want that fast, but this is from a condition 10 years ago. Reason wise, you know, I think we need to look at the whole picture, we need to look at the financial community, it's a big portion of it. Still need to do that. Obviously, you know, CRTC provides a new factory for kids. I'm kind of sitting inside, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with, with your, and also say think, you know, no one sort of wants to put a price also on our children's education, but I do think cost-wise, it would be prohibitive if we were to budget for every single student to go to Co Brown.
Well, and then, and then that's, again, we're saying, if, if it isn't one, everyone would go to Concord, why would everybody want to live at Co Brown? Right. I mean, that's, that's completely no choice in the other direction, which is not the way we do it. And I mean, and we're not, I know there are a lot of parents who are extremely happy with it. And they're not here because they just, they can't, they haven't got a chance to get away, it's going to continue, so.
Yeah.
And you certainly don't think we should do that.
I think as a board, we're sort of struggling with two issues. One of which is, we have to figure out a place for our students who are starting eighth grade in three weeks or something, where they're going to go.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry.
We first turn nine, I know they are.
So currently, those students who are coming into eighth grade don't know where they're going to high school, so.
And there's a timeline, there's a logistics issue.
Correct.
Right, I mean, that's something that we need to be clear about. Our students start picking, our eighth grade students are taking high school classes in November? In October, sorry.
The class starts in September.
November, December, they're making these decisions.
And we have to be thinking about the budget in October.
And we're, and we're working on a budget, we're, we're done with our budget at the end of November, beginning of December, and trying to go to the end of the season. We're, before that, and then we don't have an opportunity to, to vote on anything to punish. So we have this, have a gap, where we need to create a level of certainty, obviously, if the students are. From a time, a timeline standpoint, where, during the past, we miss that.
Yes.
That we know for, for certain, for these, for those students, we have to make some sort of decision.
We, we need to make a decision.
A short-term decision.
A short-term decision, so, right, so, so we have a short-term decision to make, and then a longer-term decision to make. So the short-term decision we will need to make, I would hope, before spring starts.
Yes, yes.
Students will have, depending on what it looks like, students will have to commit to where they're going, or what, start picking classes or whatever, come up with.
And we want to have informational sessions too available in the early, early, like September, yeah, in September, so parents can see what the schools have to offer.
Yes. So, you know, sort of knowing all of that, and knowing that we have, we don't have the ability for the town to vote on that one or two-year situation that we figure out. I personally am very mindful of not coming up with a solution that increases costs by an extreme amount.
Right.
I think, obviously.
I think, I think that's going to be hard to do.
Correct. I think if the town wanted.
I think so, it's going to increase, no matter, I mean, it's going to increase.
Costs will obviously increase. But I think, you know, something that Nancy said in our last meeting has been resonating with me, that the town voted for all of us in some year, some year, because they had confidence that we would come up with a solution that was the best for all students, and also the most cost-efficient for the town.
Yeah, I think, I think we're working on that, I'm just saying, it's not going to be, it's going to be more.
It will be more, it will be more.
It's going to be, you're open about that.
At baseline, Concord's tuition will go up.
Yeah.
From one of those.
Money will be expended.
Money will be expended.
Right.
I don't think, though, having a vote saying that the town has choice is sort of carte blanche, foray free for all.
Right, I agree.
And we, we need to be mindful of our history. Our history has told us that.
Yeah. And I, I am particularly sensitive to not increasing costs in the short term without the town actually voting on it. Right, so if we ultimately decide, let's go with option A, but it's going to increase costs by $300,000 for a student, or for a class.
It's not too much to it.
Right, no, no, for a class. I can leave it like in the goal, within the class.
Sending all to St. Paul's.
Um, for a year, let's say. I wouldn't feel comfortable sort of moving on that without the town voting. Which is all to say that, like, whatever we come up with for the next year or two, may be very different than what we're looking at to put on the ballot. Which leads me to a discussion that, until recently, I was very against for a number of reasons. And again, we're not making a decision tonight, but sort of opening the discussion about either a lottery system, or top operating, or both, or both. And again, this is sort of for the short term, understanding that the town has not given us a blank check to raise taxes. And quite frankly, if we, let's say, 50% of our kids wanted to go to Co Brown, we can't just like have a contract and have that happen. The town still needs to approve the budget in order for us to even have funds for that. So I'm concerned that we would set ourselves up for failure if we told half of our kids they can go to Co Brown and half to Concord, and then our operating budget fails.
And quite frankly, we'll lose Concord. I want to hit that out there. If we're starting to spend 50 or less, Concord's looking elsewhere, not just in the state. They don't want to do that, and they love our students, but they said that's going to start looking so bad.
It's a hard stage.
Yeah. And that's, and that's.
The national parents are responsible to the revenue. I don't know, they have their financial obligations. Building the financial side of this. Select Board has done a good job of keeping the tax rate relatively flat, but they've done it by burning to the lack of better terms, or funding to keep it flat. They exhausted their ability to do that. Taxing the door, I mentioned it. Let's say, use the funds to include, keep it up. Add on this, add on anything else, and it's going to be, it's going to be a reckoning, regardless of the efforts of spent on that money. We have, we know this is going to be a huge cost. Talk about top-off agreements, talk about lotteries. There are two things that, you know, for people who have kids before, a top-off agreement thing may become equally viable and, and important. But does that create a situation where we're allowing haves and have-nots if we do that? So if you have choice, if you have the financial ability, you can throw the $4,000 or $5,000 check in.
I hear you saying that, but I'm also thinking in Concord, it's the choice that we're making, and they can use a top-off and go somewhere else. I mean, we're supposed to provide the best educational opportunity for our students. Concord gets it worse. So I don't really see that as being haves and have-nots.
Well, and to be fair too, I think if we are looking at possibly adding Pembroke as a third option, that's very imperative to Concord, price-wise, right?
Okay.
I think we need to talk about it more.
Yeah, I'm going to talk slower, yeah.
So, so there's, there, there is more choice in that manner, but no, it does not, it, it still does show that difference with.
Okay, it, it creates a financial bearing difference.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, but, but we're still doing our duty. We're providing the best educational opportunity for the students.
With the financial bearing, so, look, I guess the flip side of that.
It's a school that we don't think.
So, so if a parent says, I want my kids to go round, say we, we create some level of choice, and we create this top-off voucher, or we want further, which I don't support until it's something, or if a teacher law says we can do it. But if we were to, for a family that says, I really want my kids to go to Co Brown, they don't have the financial means to do it. Is that, is that right?
But is that the same, that I really want my kids to go to Phillips Exeter, but I can't afford it?
There's a, there's a line in the sand, I guess, and you still don't know where it ends, right? What's, so.
Yeah, I mean, what I sort of keep going back and forth about is, at least until the town votes, I don't think we will get away with not having one of those systems in place. Either a lottery or a top-off, and I can't ever decide what I feel is more equitable, right? Is it, is it more equitable to give people the choice if they want to pay for it? Or is it more of an old saying, you might have a shot at getting in via lottery?
So if you do a lottery, this is probably a decent question, like, asking. If you have a lottery, you have school and special education, it's going to be.
It's the same on top-offs, I mean, that's the same question.
No, 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 no.
No, they would be, they would be a lottery.
Well, 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 I mean, I mean, I mean, if placement is done with the IEP team, and the parents, and the parents and the IEP team, and careful placement, those students wouldn't be part of the lottery, because the IEP, the IEP team and the parents may say it's school A or school B or school C. Right, so then that, so then that isolates or removes them from that potential equation. So now it's a non, it's an 80% lottery, right? It would be a lottery for the 80% of the services. I don't know how that would be administered.
Not necessarily, so a placement decision is different than services received, right? So there's, the IEP has two components, the services, and then where those services can be delivered. And that's a placement. So if an IEP team decided that the student needed to attend school X in order to get the service portion of their IEP, we would be responsible for sending them to school X. But most of our students can have their needs met through the services provided at any school. So it's not a placement decision where we would say, this student needs to go to that high school. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, so they would have the same choice, or they should be afforded the same choice as any other student in that lottery system.
Or they, they just create.
And then it's the responsibility of that school to meet the service needs of that IEP.
And if you do a lottery, how do you proceed with, like, as students, your two, your three, as far as siblings? How does that carry through and impact the availability of the lottery, therefore that potential availability of choice? Because you've now potentially benefited the seats.
Yes.
Number of seats, which won't, was, I'm sort of having sort of, we started with a lottery, and we started on a, plus a smaller number of students.
I will say for a top-off agreement, you cannot, it's not applicable to students with IEPs, I believe. We would have to pay the full cost of tuition for, regardless.
So that would be, if an IEP is developed, the services can be met at either of the schools that we were offered. Parents then have a decision in that case, the parents are allowed to decide the school?
If you're allowing them choice, period, they would have a choice if they financially obligated to pay for it.
Right, but the parents would have the choice, you could say, we want to deliver X services.
But if the choice is through a lottery, it depends on if they get, get a lottery or not.
Yeah, again, we don't, I, I don't think we can even make a decision tonight. Just things to think about, I think. I'm sort of envisioning a situation where we come up with a temporary solution, and what we put on the ballot would look very similar, but increasing the financial parts of it, right? So if we're saying.
I think it would be a standoff.
Yes.
Yeah.
So like, if we're saying we're having a lottery, then people can vote on, do we want to keep the lottery? Or do we want to pay X amount for students to go here, and X amount for students to go there? If we're doing a top-off agreement, it would be, do we want to keep doing top-off agreements? Or does the town want to take responsibility for the entire tuition fee? And that's what people can vote on.
So the devil's advocate side of that is, if you start putting these numbers on the ballot, you're seeing four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. To also find what their opportunity to do. Do they have an opportunity to reconsider the decision from last year, when things were like that? Five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, where you want to vote, consider watching, not how long, on the, social, so.
I mean, I don't know if there's a way for us to do that, that would be a question you'd need to ask a lawyer, if you can put in either-or situation. Right. What, right?
I don't know what way to do that, but I feel like.
So right, so you can't put, do you want, you know, choice and these are your options? Or do you want this high school contract? Because people confusingly put yes to vote or no to vote and.
They vote, right? So say you want to answer or do you want to?
It could be worded as, you know, do you want to continue with choice? If your answer is no, default to you can't vote. So I don't think so. The only thing I the only
I agree with you.
Can you do like a ballot, you know, where you have to pick one or the other? Can't do that either?
The only time I've seen something similar, I don't know what applies to the situation, was like for the building stuff. You'd say, you know, do you want forty five million for this? And then you could say, if our G two were to fail, would you want this option?
Right, right.
So it might be you're posing a
So I would, but I can tell.
sort of form of choice, but if 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 this fails, then would you approve this?
So.
But I don't know if that is the same.
So. And I look at a lot of different ballots and warrants, law on the town side for on a city school. I I don't know that I've seen an article in that way, but I did maybe work for the discussion of because I think start looking at the financial actually and find that maybe you have an engine.
Yeah, and I mean, I it's not, again, something that we need to decide even in August, what the order posts are going to look like.
We just need to decide what to vote on.
Right.
From the short term.
Yeah.
Right. Does, okay, so for a timeline, do you guys have another meeting with with any thoughts on it right now?
Just not yet. Well, we just had with them last week.
Right.
And so they gave us like different tiers, like A tier, B tier, C tier. So tried to and tell us what the question rates.
I would not talk. I would, we can't talk about specifics.
No, I wasn't going to.
I know we are waiting for them to get back to them to get back to us. We had a bunch of questions.
And for us.
But I I would like to have another meeting with them, certainly, and later, okay.
Do we do we need another August meeting? Temple School or this?
You have one on.
We have the fourth.
Second.
I keep thinking it's the morning.
The second and the sixth seat. So I guess we can see what the agendas look like. Maybe we just have it on the night. We need to schedule another one.
I don't.
I have a question about negotiations though, too. Do we need to schedule? We should probably talk about that a couple of more.
Yeah, okay.
Deciding next steps.
Alright.
Uh. The negotiations.
But it is my sincere hope that we have at least an answer for the eighth graders in August before they start. Anything else that I want to talk about for high school, so. Building project discussion. So this is sort of an open ended discussion again. I thought the architect presentation was very interesting and I certainly don't want to lose steam in talking about the project as well. I personally don't foresee anything going on the warrant article this year or twenty twenty four. But that doesn't mean that we should stop, obviously, talking about it. So wanted to have sort of a discussion about whether we think that we need to assemble another group of citizens to discuss a project or if anyone had thoughts about the presentation or ideas about space. Obviously, you don't have to engineer the whole thing in your head right now, but would like to sort of set a timeline for when we want to have sort of community reach outs. I think.
Well, I think one thing that I would like to see is the the cost that they had the representation where didn't take into consideration all the work that all the work is being done.
Correct, right.
The rules, the buyer would pay them all this sort of stuff. So it would be very helpful to have an idea of what the alternative, the alternatives been designed that they had, not the first one.
And you learn the one that was off that was a little under that keep pushing, basically.
Yeah, just that, yeah. Exactly. So it increases the nurses and then it gives
It was minimal renovation, so.
first and second floor, right? So I I'd be very interested in what the cost of that would be, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely. You have no idea. It's my
Right, I have no problem. So you, it's a it's a little bit more to it than that. You need to decide if you're going to hire a construction manager, you're going to, if you're going to go upstairs, you're going to use the same person. There are things going, we did everything with the gentleman. I think you're stopping here.
I was just going to interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
So if we go back to the original set of plans, that included a full renovation of the system, so. So if you're looking at more of this way, a new envelope and a more advanced side of this building, isolated, a third of that project cost was inside the existing facility. So if we, you know, you lock that off from a thirty thousand foot fast and dirty number, they could give you a per square foot calculation. It's going to be rough and dirty, but it's going to give you something. We go, okay, this is ten million, a twenty million, five million, two million, forty million. That, I mean, that sounds, no, but what what I did is I think that that sounds like what you may be looking for initially. It's just, it's just, it's what you're showing be five million dollars or is it fifteen million dollars or twenty million dollars?
Right. And
That could be done pre-construction management, pre-budgetary phase, but it's not necessarily going to be a number accurate enough for for a bond or a warrant. It's more to be an informational number to say, we're seeing four hundred dollars a square foot, we're seeing five hundred dollars a square foot for a building. Something along those whatever number. Like the last time we did it, it was about three hundred, three hundred.
And this year, the it's a twelve percent increase this year on building.
Yeah, so I mean, you have to ten percent from previous year and like twelve percent thirty. Probably even closer to about four hundred dollars. So thirty thousand square foot ambition for it's worth it, it's still like right? So.
I also think, hold on, we need to think about the things that were not in the plans. So we need to have music and art on the first floor, the library on the first floor. And we need to think about how those could be lived around and, you know, changing space up here.
Right. If they would, they would be able to do a like a heavy reno, because they can figure out the square footage for heavy reno, maybe a number. So I think a a high level estimated pre-warrant article and pre-anything number is would be available relatively easily just based off some simple calculations. That's independent of preparing a bond, which were to fall higher construction management, sort of back out. Let's say there would be a bond, which would be pre-construction, pre-fully engineered, because the fully engineered building of that size is going to cost this or when we have such a sign. So you're going to be working off of ordinary set of plans for either design builds that are
To get an estimate.
Yeah, but to get an estimate, I think I think La Valley has the ability to produce an estimate for the sake of a conversation.
Right, in terms of like getting the town involved and saying this is ballpark. What are we missing? What do you think is not necessary?
I think that's your next step is to support, say, that kind of part of it. You say, let's store fifty million dollars about to buy us.
Right.
Do you support this? Do you not support this? And then follow it up with, you know, do you support, you know, as ideas start to, that creates a conversation, ideas start to to percolate.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a, you know, there wasn't an addition to cafeteria.
Right.
So I didn't see it.
I didn't see there was.
Right, when I looked at, I was surprised that that was.
That that's been asked since.
So, you know, if there's an addition to cafeteria, maybe you say, okay, we got a cafeteria, it's actually apps. And then you start trying to kind of loosely calculate it out and say, you know, should we proceed with this? And you would put a voice as a long starter. And B, which is something different.
I I think what I was, what I was thinking too is I would like to see that we make a list. This is what we want. Because this plan doesn't, I don't think this one was a design. Do they, do they put the music and the art down below? Because I can't read anything.
I thought it was on the first floor now in the wood.
I opened it up and I can't read anything. This is like, it's half.
Because there's, and there's two different floors, so.
Oh, there is an art music down below. Alright, so it's har- art music in the tech lab and then kindergarten classroom. Does that include the health center?
Yeah. I thought the media center was also going to be on the first floor.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think music. I think the nurses office, is that a sleeping bigger, right?
I don't know that there was a figure there, so.
I'm not sure. It looks, it's kind of.
You know, I would like to ask them too, like if we, so with that alternative plan, you know, how easy is it to kind of rearrange the inside, but keep the square footage, but just rearrange the inside to accommodate, you know, what we need?
So the the biggest portion of the expenses next to it.
Right.
As far as your your footprint is where your money is spent. A wall moving forward, backwards, if you see one direction. Then the, I have a wall isn't necessarily going to be expensive or expensive. It's like work engineering and well in that building. Right? So that envelope was a square footage. I I didn't pull the exact dimensions off. It was a square. So that's where your expense, your greatest expense is going to be incurred is just in that, the square footage. It looked like in their simplified set of plans that we were able to kind of isolate that K one and two onto the lower level, which is the objective of moving IAs downstairs. But it doesn't give the breakout spaces, which is something we will, you know, we're discussing at previous set of plans. And creating kind of that, it's not creating that new approach to education. It's it's creating more footprint for the current approach.
Yeah, it's getting rid of the modulars.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's taking care of the things that were on our clients.
But it's not. Yes, but it is improving, right?
Right.
Which which maybe all the community wants to do.
Right, right. I mean, with tech, it's going to either on the side, but on everything that's sensitive, I don't know that. I mean, that's definitely something that we can, frankly, the community needs to see, you know. So this basically then, their alternative one, that's something I'm going to do. They leave a music and art above. It's basically the art on the first floor. I'm not sure about the health. Nursing station.
I don't think that was addressed.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. And then it doesn't address the
The cafeteria.
Right. And otherwise, and then of course, the other thing is the I mean, hopefully with this being more room, that take care of all the problems with stairwells and stuff, stairwells and the hallways. Hospital and all that.
And part of that was to be I'm sorry, do you want to follow?
Well, I'm I'm sitting here thinking, yeah, probably. But I did, but I didn't put it in the hallway. I had it in my classroom. Underneath tables. I found places to put it or my home, so I need to go. Okay, so the next step then would be to go back to them to get an estimate for.
I I think, I think a reasonable request would be to ask the valley to you give us a super rough, dirty estimate if you wanted to do this about how much do we have to talk. And they may tell you that they took the formula and added twenty percent to it anyway. But whatever it is, it will give you something like where it doesn't need to include the heavy rental in the building. The real style, I mean, it's much larger. Eliminating of that, say fifty million dollars regarding the tax, we'll have about two and a half million dollars of work done.
Yeah.
That's wrong.
Right. I was just looking at what they did with the upstairs library and they turned it into a presentation on key purpose. Did I see that?
Yeah.
It's like they made a meeting room between the this room and the library and a presentation room, the special case. So it looks like they turned it into like three things. And the science room. The best science room.
Um, okay, so I think we can deal with asking them and potentially also doing a draft that has an expanded cafeteria and
And ask about the nurses station, yeah.
The cafeteria plans, they have, because they were just.
Yeah.
Right, they have.
And there's like specific dimensions up on the state, right?
Like they, they had, the cafeteria was part of the original structure. So they just have to take that portion of the project and
I see, that's where I go like with shuffling gears around. So with that addition, like, well, I guess this kitchen was not that easy to be a cafeteria, so.
Yeah.
The empty room probably isn't a big deal, so.
I have to say, I am a little worried about the wet one right there, so. Nobody's talking about that, but that's, I'm concerned about that. It goes right through the tip of the weapon.
There there would be engineering involved in incorporating.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's a man made weapon, but it's still a nice weapon.
There there is certainly engineering and that was part of the discussion the first time around.
Okay, so for next steps, we'll ask them for a rough estimate and about the cafeteria and nurses station. If anyone looks at those plans and thinks, oh, we are missing something or this is too many rooms or whatever, you can obviously discuss.
Like I say, I put up a comments room. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do you know people that have seen it?
Right, so that's sort of the next. I mean, I don't, I don't know that we can have a super meaningful discussion until we have a rough estimate of cost. I mean, because I think if we don't have a rough estimate of cost, we're sort of getting into the same situation as last time, which is we say all these things that we want and then there's a rocky place that, okay.
So so the approach this time is starting from smallest number.
I think, yeah, well, we, but that's
You want to have a cafeteria.
Yeah, the average square foot first.
Rough cost first, yeah.
Right, and I think like knowing sort of their bones, this is how many classrooms we need, this is what it will cost. Just to give a sense of like, this is not a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar project. Like this is not the cost of the modulars for four years type of project, right? So sort of setting expectations of being like, if we want to get rid of the modulars, this is the bare minimum of what we are going to spend. And if we want to add on to that.
And then we need to let them know, let them know this is what we're saving, again, with the modulars.
Right.
The other thing, consider when you're looking at a building project, it's time to
They told us, they told us pretty much nothing.
There's going to be like half a year or two.
Years?
Yeah, because they're finishing up now and then they're working, our our potential firm is actually on the committee with the Department of Education, which is great. So we have the most up to date information. There's going to be a year where there's no aid because they're redoing, they approved the new rules, but they're redoing the process. So they're going to have all the schools ranked. You're going to know where you are in the ranking and how much you receive before you go to vote. So that will be next.
So they're fixing that.
Yes, they're fixing that, but I think
But that's going to be like three years.
We can't.
It's just about now.
Which is
But you're not ready now, anything.
Which you're not. And at least you may know that they're going to be at three, four, nine, five.
You know, he did indicate that there are some schools on the list that have serious, you know, schools with life safety concerns are going to be, they're going to get a lot higher points. There's schools that, you know, are sprinkled, there's schools that are compliant.
There's some there are some
Yeah. So it's not, you know, it's it's that and your free and reduced lunch.
Kind of letting us know that it wasn't very much.
It wasn't looking good for your.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so I think something to think about coming into the fall is, do we need more money for warrant article for engineering? Again, we don't need to decide that today, but.
You have, I think you have a thought to get another point.
Alright.
If you, that part you have, if you wanted to fully engineer it, prior to putting it on the ballot, what that spending half a million dollars or a million dollars or whatever works out to you on the engineering without knowing you're building it.
Right.
Isn't necessarily a legitimate concern. Typically, the process that you're done for construction, the funding is to produce a budget, going through the bond. Get approval. Now you know you have to find it. Finalize the detailed engineer frames for the stand. You go through that process, that process takes six months to a year of like non-stop work. Then often where the engineering side of it is in the bills, potentially. Necessarily, that's. And we did a lot of the heavy pre-engineering part in terms of the funds, the relationship. Valid. Pre-engineering from the original side. Just think, that was a huge portion of the cost, because I think it was better to get an engineer, just so that the site to be able to produce plants outside. So I think you have enough to get another bond, another warrant document. If you use a similar practical design. Your your engineering, engineering curves after.
Okay. Um, so I assume we can get some sort of rest, rough estimate for one of our meetings, I don't know, I guess, maybe not this.
I think you're probably more than.
Okay, that's fine.
And I would say probably just.
I'll read it for them.
Yeah, and that's fine.
Maybe there's another work session.
Yes, as a work session, and then I think we should think of and talk with people about how to get community involved, right? Like, do we do a publication? Do we have coffee clutches? Do we do, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is. So something to think about, once we have more info, we'll sort of hit hit the ground and start getting people.
The big thing is too, that I think people really need to know that we're not in compliance.
Right.
That's the big thing. It's not just that, you know, if it wants to expand building or add more classrooms to the. So we need to address this. Issues.
And there's like very, very good and legitimate reasons, but.
We have a big poster out on, on road. We need to get in compliance, here's the new plan.
Yeah, whatever we want.
Nothing, come on. That's terrible. I'm sorry, I forgot I said that.
Yeah, no, I totally agree, but just my request to all of you is to sort of sort of brainstorming, thinking about that and how we can, in the fall, start, I don't know, publicizing it in subway and asking for comments, asking for engagement, which is always something that we start with, so.
Saying, it was the thought.
Yeah.
But a question on that, I would imagine, says, look, we have a future, we support in our neighborhood expansion facility, yes. Current estimate, honestly, yes. And I would give people, maybe, if they're, if they're, say, okay, sounds like an August issue of the Spencer, it's just a question. Trying to find, I'm living sense of, what are they, what's if we do want to support our.
Yeah, I I worry about that just because thinking about past warrant articles, if there isn't a set price tag for, what is it, for what is it gonna cost a person? Then I I think people will say, yeah, of course we'll support that, until they realize what it's gonna cost them.
It's. Right. I mean, you can put a fifteen million dollar number and say, you support expansion, yes. See what. You can, it's difficult to parse out, at some point, like, you have to understand how municipal that, right? So if you bond out fifteen million dollars on a twenty-year bond, it's gonna cost you all it, ten million dollars to build, it's a cost. You cannot, sure, but it changes every single year. That bond payment is reduced over time, as bonds pay down, annual payments go down, money in place, that pays a plate, that's a tax rate, so you're only never, you're never looking at it for more than a year, basically, right? So the math changes. But if you were to say, do you support a twelve million dollar project, bond it out over twenty years? So you're providing as much information as you can without, if, that build theory of math, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um.
Gives you a way to take it down, that's what I, it's an option.
I'll, yeah, and I was looking at other, um, schools and their warrant articles and stuff, and some schools have very significant like commentary from the board. So if that was the route we were gonna go, I would say we would need to explain that like, this is what it would cost to get rid of the modulars, right? Like, we can't, people can't demand that we get rid of the modulars and also, we're not going to spend extra.
But if you get rid of.
Right.
Yes.
So, um, I was saying, you know, Errol's been here a couple times and asked to put things in his newspaper. That would be a good place to put it.
Yeah.
Well, I think so, because it would be, what's our other way? I mean, we put it in rich, but then it's just, it's parents, that was a test for parents. We need to.
The school. Me.
Yeah. But we need to reach there.
Yeah.
And he also mentioned, he did a survey, he had some kind of survey. You know, I almost wonder too, like, as we get closer to doing something like this, if we can utilize something like old home keys and have someone's, you know, set up at old homes, with a table and some of the information that we have, that, you know.
They probably would have the damn information market.
Right, right, just using some of the community event services.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah.
So, right, yeah. So yes, keep brainstorming. We will, um, figure out when we can put it back on the engine. And that was gonna be the the next steps, if that works for everybody. Um, okay. Do we want to do public comments before non-public? I don't think we're gonna be voting on anything on public. And there's some people go non-cop or non-public, so.
Yeah.
Because certainly.
Also, in an effort to establish that.
Right, that'll be nice, yeah. Yeah, let, we're gonna move public comments before non-public. We don't anticipate voting on anything, um,
It may be a long conversation.
There was no votes and it may be a long conversation, so. And if there's a burning desire afterward, I will entertain a public comment after non-public if someone wants to say it. But we'll do nonpub, or we'll do public comments now.
Thank you for being here. I'm, I'm Bobby Anne from Brown Road. Um, I just wanna remind you, it seems like from the audience sitting back, that you're kind of forgetting, you already got a vote. No to only Concord High, you also got a vote from your whole town that showed up to vote, that they want choice. You also, in your line of profession, you know that, I I heard a couple comments saying, you're providing the best school possible. No, you're actually, if you do studies on school boards, you're providing the best academic experience possible and you're providing academic achievement. If you go to the New Hampshire State Education website, you're gonna see that Concord High has the lowest achievement rates. If you talk to the people and the current students that are there, which, I don't know, I've heard a couple say they're doing okay, there are even some special ed students that are currently there are struggling. They weren't excelling in DCS and now that they're there, I I personally know a few of them, um, if you're here today, but they're not doing well in CHS. So, I know that CHS provides services, but are they really the best academically successful services that you can provide? I understand your hands are tied with monetary restrictions at this moment, but I I strongly, strongly encourage you to not walk into this thing, we're gonna give the people just CHS for another year or two years, it is not smart. People are gonna be extremely furious if you do that, not not just a small group here, like a lot of people. You did do a survey that over seventy-five percent wanted CHS, Co-Brown, sorry. Over seventy-five people, you did a survey that, what's it? Oh, sorry, I'm talking about the one that they did before you even started showing up. Um, so, you did one survey in the past, you did another survey currently, and more of them were saying that Co-Brown was the best place for their child. Your opinion does matter and your opinion is valid, because you've done research and then you love CHS for your child and you think it's the best for most. However, the most important opinion is parent of that child, that that parent has to deal with what comes home after they come home from school and see all of the things that you might not see as a school board, so please, I encourage you to, I I know you mentioned food for thought a couple times. Your job is also to listen to your community. So if you keep giving them the same thing over and over again and saying, well, CHS is the best, you you, it's a quote you had today. CHS is the best school that we can provide to them. No, your community has told you otherwise. So I, you don't want a lot of angry people here in March, trust me, like you don't, you don't want that. Um, I don't know, I hope, I hope that packet for the special ed is is in there, because you heard a lovely assistant who spoke about their child who's in Co-Brown and is doing great with lots of special needs. So I don't want that to scare you just because it's different, like everybody gets scared for change, but I don't think the lottery is the right idea either. That's that's really scary and you've heard the top off is completely legal many times by different lawyers, so think what you will from that. Um, but if you could maybe in your next meeting, mention the number of special ed students who currently, because it's hard when you have this packet and maybe we'll see it, maybe you won't, with numbers. Hopefully it has an average. I know it's hard to predict, everything's so hard to predict, but like an average number of students in Concord High currently, or actually not even Concord High, sorry. You do know that special ed can go wherever their IDP is special fit, so like, it's kind of a moot point to even focus on that for, for, I think it's important to see all the statistics and all the numbers, but they're gonna go where they're gonna go anyway. Even mention that, like the lottery, um, so maybe the number of students currently in special ed would really help. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greg Woodmore, North Road, I have never stuck around second public comments, but man, there was a lot of stuff said today. Oh, um, I mean, what we witnessed during the school record discussion, Jessica meets bias against Co-Brown. I I can't fathom why. Tell me why you prefer Concord High School over Co-Brown without mentioning CRTC. Some of the merits of Concord High School, by some. It's a discussion I'd love to hear. Only ten percent of students utilize CRTC. Are we gonna pigeonhole the other ninety percent of kids in for those ten percent? I mean, Co-Brown, I mean, and I can make them available again. I put together endless spreadsheets, uh, you know, program for program, Co-Brown versus, uh, CRTC. I'd say they match up really well. So, your job is to institute what the town wants and I'm I'm really reading the writing on the wall that you're looking to set up a one-year extension for the Concord High School, uh, contract. Town didn't say they wanted that, not at all. Have you considered MOUs with Co-Brown and Concord? Get us through that year? Absolutely, why not? Nobody wants lotteries. You bring up the term lottery, people are gonna go running for those, so. Bad, bad memories in this town with lotteries. Uh, the town voted for two options minimum. We know that PA is cheaper than Concord High School. And PA offers CRTC. So how about a Co-Brown, PA combo? Sounds like a winning combination to me. So your opinions are just that. Your opinions as to which school is the best option does not trump the will of the parents. Parents know what's best for their kids, parents want the choice, parents will make those choices. Time and time again, the town has told you what it wants. I not personally agree, but it's what the town voted for. And I will work tirelessly, make sure town gets what it wants.
Becky Cody, I was like, um, just, I'm not understanding on that, but the voters voted for all of you because you're all really intelligent people and I believe that, but they also voted for choice, I really hope that just a different way, but I get, of course, I'm hoping you to hear that. Um, but having more than one school record, you give that choice and then, you know, it's not just about money, it's about parents being able to, of their kids, to be the best they can be. Um, and I also, I I heard some bias about Co-Brown, but I just wanted to clear up because they have, um, not PAN programs, but major individualized, so although Concord has programs, it doesn't mean that they are good fits for them, but if you are not the parent of a special needs kid, I implore you to reach out and speak to all of us, because just on a special ed issue alone, you may get some perspective that you don't have, because I really, I I hear a lot of bias, um, around believing it and I I just don't feel like you guys have a good handle on that. And I would like to share, I know there are so many parents who would love to share that with you, but really, it's not so good. Um, so, it left on all of you, as you.
Thanks, thank you so much.
Hey, Cross, Mokalite Road, um, I've been at a meeting recently, but I'm here today, um, Wednesday I got the obligation, but I was open. This is nice, but tonight's was information. I have, I heard a lot, a lot of information, some of it pretty relevant, pretty good, a lot of financial information, uh, good to have. Very nice, um, nicely done, I I appreciate the effort and that. And I'm not going to talk about Co-Brown versus Concord, it's part of an academic level. I just wanna look, I just wanted to briefly discuss or talk about my opinions on what, uh, some of the things that I heard financially made sense. And we ought to be looking at some of that, the government, the state, the townsman, uh, the townspeople money. Um, you know, and one of the things that I heard, which I, which I understood before, but I wanted to, um, bring back up is the the fact of offering top-off agreements, I think, in certain, um, areas is something that can be taken advantage of. I know that there's some legal stuff working and I, I think Mr. Ling was, you know, spelled out, he was, he had a final decision on some of that, I know that's working. Um, but I do know, historically speaking, as far as I'm aware, there has never been a challenge to a top-off agreement in the district. So, that's a data point we should be thinking about when we're talking about finances and financial responsibilities. That even though it may not have finalized its way through the court system right now, it has historically never been challenged. So I think on at least a minimum one or two year consideration, you ought to be able to consider that as part of your one or two year temporary, um, or short-term solution. So I wouldn't discount top-off agreements right off the bat, even for this upcoming negotiations that you're working on. I would seriously consider holding that, because I, a taxpayer, where I'm not benefiting from, you know, making the choice, but I, taxpayer, I would love you to control that cost, whatever that is. I would also like to talk about the fact that if in fact somebody chooses a private school, you could definitely use a top-off agreement on something like that, and that top-off agreement doesn't even necessarily have to be as high as, I don't believe, as high as what you're currently paying, it could even be a reduced amount to a certain level. I don't know exactly how that would work or or what level that would be. But I do know that it comes with less cost, period, even if it was an exact scheme for tuition, because you have no responsibility for, um, transportation at all. You have no responsibility at all for logistically working out that representation, that all falls onto the parents if they choose to take private education. I would absolutely put on the table right this year, you know, that private education, that a top-off agreement should be an option for people in town here, that you might be surprised at how much money you might save. Because some of these private education systems are less money. Um, substantially less money. So, one, you're saving transportation costs, two, you're probably gonna see some differences in lower cost of tuition, right? I would discount private off the table for for a given, as an option for school. I I I would say that, you know, I see a lot of things in my own business and in business as a, as a whole, from real estate, commercial real estate holdings, right down to what we're seeing in school systems right now, that the marketplace is. that the marketplace is changing. It's not 20 years ago. It's not as desperate as it was 20 years ago. There's way more opportunities today to education on high school than there was 20 years ago. So, 20-year-old data should not even be a consideration when you're talking about this current time. Marketplace has changed. It is continuing to change. It will continue to change. It's not going to stay the same. So, let's not talk about what happened in the past and let's look at what the possibilities are of what's happening right now. I think there's a lot more financial benefits that may even open up in the next year or two possibly, depending on what the marketplace does. I know, again, that the, the legal opinion over top-off agreements is, is being battled heavily legally, you know, but I would encourage you to at least consider for this upcoming short-term solution that you have some level of utilizing a top-off agreement if that makes you feel comfortable from a monetary standpoint to control costs. I love that, okay? That you should utilize that option right now and consider what that amount's going to be. Unfortunately, you can't consider the data that I, I think you, you're changing, your data's going to change from Concord because of whatever's happening right now. So, you might have to discard Concord as the number that you're going to carry. And you might have to look at other schools that are willing to give you that number. But we're not going to give you that number. We know that because they already disclosed that. Pembroke might have that number available. I'm not sure. I haven't looked at any of the data and I haven't chased any of that down, but I would certainly look at it as an opportunity. So, I would say that you have a good opportunity to try something different instead of something the same that's been the same for 20 years. And, and in some of the town people, clearly, I'm going to just say at least half, would be, would love for you to consider something different in education. So, I encourage that. Thanks.
Nancy Chu, Pleasant Hill Road. Just a couple of things. I thought the reason we had a school of record, and I could be wrong if I'm just going to put it up there, was to guarantee that all our students have a placement. So, when considering a school of record, I would not choose a school that cannot guarantee that all our students can go there immediately. Because then we're putting kids into that situation of not having a high school to go to. I could misunderstand what a school of record is, but that's something I thought I heard. Top-off agreements. I was one that spoke very much against them because for my own personal upbringing, my mother would not have been able to do that for me. But now, I still think it's funny that the legislature had to pass a law if something was already legal, but they seem to be doing that. So, to me, if someone thinks that's not equitable, I would have them talk to one of the legislators because they must seem to think that it is. I too am talking to families. Maybe some of my families are more on the older end now and don't have kids in school, but I still know a lot of people that have kids in school. And I don't know how we get the information out there because that's always been an issue in Deerfield, how to let people know. But families that I've talked to and I feel comfortable saying, hey, you know, what do you feel about choice? And I'm not criticizing them. I have nothing against any school, whatever. I want all kids to have school, uh, schools to go to without worrying about it. But many of them don't understand the amount of cost it could be. When they say, oh, well, my taxes are going to go up $500. That's, that's no big deal. And then you say, well, you're talking one line item. You're not talking your entire tax bill. You're talking one line item. And I will say there are families that are very surprised by that. They don't have that information. There are families that do understand that, but there are many families that don't understand. So, I don't know how we get that information out there, but somehow it has to be. My other thing, the comment about Concord High, so many people being unhappy with it. Again, having taught here for as long as I did, I still am in contact with many families and I talk to the kids and I'm hearing about their experiences. No school is perfect for any child. But there was a survey done not too long ago asking parents and both end students, their experiences with Co-Brown. And if I remember correctly, the percentages of people being happy with Concord at the time of that survey were extremely high. And that wasn't that long ago. So, to come out and say, oh, everyone, you know, people are having an awful experience at Concord. We had students come here and speak to the public about their experiences at Concord. So, do I have anything against Co-Brown? Absolutely not. If that works out where students want to go, good for them. But don't criticize Concord when the information is out there saying that people are happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Koppick, Linda McNair Perry. Questions for the architect. If you go to that piece of paperwork, you're asking questions about the nursing station. I would like to have them clarify when they say something's not code compliant. There generally, there are a few exceptions, but you're generally not required to bring in system looking up to modern code. If that was the case, every school in New Hampshire would be putting a motion out right now. So, I think it's really important that you understand what is really, you know, to say we have to build a building because it's not code compliant may not be true. It, it may not be in the best interest and it's certainly not the safest. And I think that that's an easy explanation. We shouldn't have the first graders trying to man down these stairs, especially when there's coats and sewing machines and nobody put the sign up. But just be clear, I just, it was very disturbing to me, you know, whatever, in March. You know, as an engineer who does it, I used to start building for a few years before. So, I know code. There's just very little that translates into, okay, you have, you have the taxes. If that was the case, you'd be in the situation of a school of beauty. If anybody knows that, that was a nightmare. But they literally shut them down because they just weren't on code compliant. You would be getting nasty, nasty, nasty letters if you were not. And that's all I ask is to find out from the architect that way. And then you were talking about maybe putting something on the ballot too. If you do think you need more ar- architectural money, you could certainly, similar to what the select will did, said, you're thinking about Roma Police Station, when you give us $80,000 and you say no. You ask them for money for more design. If they say no, then you're, you know, for $15, you tell them it's for a $15 million building, but if they say no, we're not going to give you $150,000 to design a $15 million building. You kind of have to answer they're not going to support a $15 million building. Just as a suggestion, it's, it's brainstorming, that's all. Because I don't know how much money we've got left, but the architect is only going to work for free for so long. Okay, you're covered at the moment. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Stacy Marchand, New Hampshire, South Road. Picking back off of those comments I had mentioned at the last meeting about, I don't think this was in violation of fire codes as to life safety by having storage in the stairwells and the hallways for the last, I think since 2018. So, I didn't get any response, but I was just hoping that maybe you could let them know whether the stairwells will be cleared by the start of school this term. Because I think that's a pretty big market for students.
When you say that you struggle with engagement in public, I would, I've asked this before in email, if you actually come around. I would strongly encourage you to share the documents that you're reviewing at meetings. So, if the costs and things that are presented to the board on special ed and that sort of thing were shared in the agenda online, we could look at that and kind of have some idea of what it is that you're looking at and talking about. Because we're sitting here not having any idea what you're really talking about because we're blind. And then it's not included in the minutes. So, all that's presented to us is kind of a summary. So, we, it's hard to be engaged when we're not given information. Provided information so we can be fully informed and engage in discussions long before a vote. We can't properly engage in discussions if you don't have the information. And then it comes voting day and everybody's surprised by what the vote is and it shouldn't be that way because that is so much work that you all have put in. And you might be surprised by a vote, but we don't know what you're looking at. So, I would say the more information you share, the better dialogue you can have with the community, the better results we're all going to get, right, across the board. So, please consider sharing that online with your agenda and with your meeting minutes, the documentation that's provided. In terms of, oh, and Facebook reaches the community. Use your Facebook page. Put the documents that you're looking at out on Facebook. Wow, right? There are 4,000 people in Deerfield on the community page. And you see there's a ton of engagement on Facebook. Some negative, some positive, whatever. Put the documents out there. I agree using Arrow's newspaper and use the library, right? Put some information there, you know, in a reading room or something that people could access. I wanted to talk about school choice and Co-Brown and Concord. There are a lot of people that are happy with Concord. There are a lot of people that are happy with Co-Brown. The issue is choice. And so, at your, the survey that you did, 61.1% of people who said what their first choice would be said Co-Brown. 30.2% said Concord. What is the most important aspect, important thing about the school that you're choosing? What is it? Academics. By far, it's academics. Number one thing is academics. Number two is transporta- is proximity. So, look how far the school is. On those two items, Co-Brown has like all over Concord. That's just a fact. I will give you again the stats. Co-Brown, 21, 22, their level of math proficiency is 60%. Concord High School is 26%. These are their 11th graders. Science proficiency for Co-Brown, 67%. Concord High School, 29%. English language proficiency for Co-Brown, 81%. Concord High School, 52%. So, what I'm hearing in particular from a couple of people is how important CRTC is and getting students ready for jobs. But we're not ju- are we swinging so far, the pendulum's so far, that we no longer care about classical education? Do we only want to prepare our kids for jobs because how depressing is that? We, our job is to prepare our kids to think, to teach them how to think, to love education. What if they want to study art and math and philosophy and history? What are we doing to those kids? I didn't hear anything about a classical, the importance of the classical education tonight. All I heard about was CRTC and preparing our kids for jobs. And that is really depressing to me, really depressing. That's why we cut down school choice. Some kids want CRTC. They want to go, they want to become a nurse, they want to become, you know, an autotech, whatever they want to do. They have a job they want to get and they want to go do that. Great, let them choose the best program for them. There are other kids who might want to be an attorney, a private, right? Anything that's not directly related to a job and technical program. What are we doing to those kids? That's not fair to just send them to the school that has the best CRTC program. So, let's remember other students as well and allowing choice. Top-off agreements, very quickly, and I'll come up for the end. I, I'm a taxpayer too. I don't want to see everybody's taxes go up so we can pay the very expensive schools for kids, okay? I do, I think there is a financial responsibility to our taxpayers. But we do not wait for laws to be challenged in a court before we accept that they're okay. Congress passes laws every day. We don't wait till the court challenge comes and it goes to the Supreme Court to abide by that law. All right? So, let's not wait for the challenge before we consider whether the legalities and the bills that are moving through the State House are significant. There is a sea change in school choice. I think you guys are doing a lot of amazing research and nailing all of the issues. I hope that we do not end up with just a Concord contract because it will be a disservice to the residents and the parents and the students in this town. It will be a reputation of what they voted for. And utilize top-off agreements. Get Co-Brown, get Pembroke Academy, get Concord High School in there. And if Concord decides they don't want our students at the end of the day, you know, find another school. And, and people that love Concord can send them to their, to Concord as, you know, on their. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and attention. Thank you.
Bobby Anne Dusty, Brown Road. I just want to clarify, I forgot to clarify, at one of the other, sorry, other meetings, Patty mentioned that Pembroke, you got an email just a year ago or so that Pembroke couldn't take our students. So, I'm scared that that might, I don't want you to waste time. So, just to clarify, because too much of the time. And then also, just to let you know, you mentioned the getting into jobs. Co-Brown also offers over 20 different programs where they work directly with UNH and you get college credits. So, it's the same thing. I've said that already. So, like you're filling them on broken records, but like can't just say one place is the best place because of one thing when the other school offers the same. Like they offer college credits too, so thank you so much.
Any other public comments? Okay. Then I will make a motion to enter into non-public session under NHRA SAA 91-A, colon three, section two, small letter P. Yes.